Is this this is. Okay, everybody been go ahead. All right. I'd be in six oh one, I called to order the City of Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It is our regular meeting for the month of November, it is also our almost second to last meeting, I guess we have two meetings next month, but it is November sixteen, two thousand twenty one, and Jen, would you please, no, let's do the Zoom thing first. We're doing a hybrid meeting, we have a city hall, we're in the city hall chambers, and we also are doing it by Zoom. And our webinar ID is eight six five one nine four four three one six two. And you can call in at one six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. And at this point, I'd like to.
Commissioner Ben.
Here.
Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Shafer. Commissioner Wissing.
Yep.
Commissioner West. Commissioner Waller.
You.
Commissioner Thornton. You have one.
Thank you, also maintaining a motion to seat our alternate Commissioner Waller for tonight.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. See none, thank you, we'll compete. Moving on to receipt of the minutes from the October twenty sixth meeting. And I'm entertaining a motion to receive those minutes.
I'll make a motion to receive those minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion in the minutes?
No.
They look good me.
They look good, okay, excellent, I will abstain from voting since I wasn't at the meeting, everybody else was at the October twenty sixth meeting, excellent, so I will call for the question, let's do it by voice vote as well, all in favor say aye.
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 And those opposed. See none, excellent, minutes are received, item number four on the agenda as always is comments from citizens appearing for items that are not on the agenda. And as usual, we see nobody, so we move on to our first continued hearing, and it looks like this item needs to be continued to next month.
Commissioner Ben, should we just see if there are anybody, is anybody online, if there's other citizens, I'm assuming there might not be, but.
Okay, I need to figure out how I'm gonna see this.
Just somebody can raise their hand if you.
Sure, we can do that, if somebody on Zoom is here that would like to speak for items that are not on the agenda, please, please raise your hand.
I don't see anyone that's raised their hand.
Okay, thank you, we'll see nobody, we'll move on to the continued item, and this is a consideration of a code text amendment to the municipal code title oh seven oh, and it looks like we need to continue this item, what's been requested, we continue until next month, so I'm entertaining a motion to continue. We'll move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion on the minutes?
Sorry for the interruption, with your motion, could you specify the exact date of the meeting?
Could you please let us know that you would like it to be on?
Touche, touche, December fourteenth, Tuesday, December fourteenth. Is your next regular we scheduled meeting?
Twelve fourteen.
Yes.
Okay.
I move to continue the text code amendments to municipal code title, code zero oh seven zero, to the next meeting Tuesday, December fourteenth.
And I amend my.
Of twenty twenty one.
I amend my second.
Excellent, amended motion amended second, and we're gonna keep doing this, well, no, we'll do it, the. Yeah, the buttons work, right?
There's no, there's no button, we're working for all the technology.
Then we will do it by voice vote. All in favor to continue this item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed. See none, excellent, this item has been continued, and we are moving right into our first new item. For tonight, it is planning file ten twenty one, minor site and architectural plan, twenty five twelve South Grand Avenue, consideration of a minor site and architectural plan for development of three story twenty unit multifamily residential building. And.
We've never shared this meeting.
I think it's up, right?
Emery's gonna tell us, tell us about it.
Oh, you mean that?
Sorry.
Okay, so this is for planning file ten twenty one, a minor site and architectural plan at twenty five twelve South Grand Avenue. So let's go through a short presentation here, most of this was in the staff report too. So again, it's consideration of a minor site and architectural plant, so planning and zoning commission is the deciding body. It's for a three story twenty unit multifamily building at twenty five twelve South Grand, the applicant is LA Design, the owner is twenty five twelve South Grand LLC, the property is owned commercial. Surrounding land uses to the north is residential, south is commercial offices and residential, east is commercial and west is commercial, and the entire lot size is twenty nine thousand one hundred eighty five square feet, and it's currently a vacant lot. So the action item is to consider application for the minor site and architectural plant, and staff recommends approval of the minor site and architectural plant with suggested findings and conditions on pages eleven and twelve of the staff report. And so the planning and zoning commission action could be approve item, approve item with conditions, deny application, or continue item to next regularly scheduled meeting in December. So again, just project summary, twenty unit multifamily building, property is currently vacant, so I think previously it was Bishop Plumbing and Heating, and that burned down, I think, two thousand and seven, so this is some photos of what it looks like now, and on the right is just surrendering from the applicant. See also later presentation, so again, that would be from Grand Avenue. Perspective, looking, looking east. So just again, kind of an overview of the surrounding uses, so you can see this whole area, everything kind of that magenta color, that's all commercial zoning, so pretty uniform zoning across the area, you just have a couple of different uses called out, right next to the vet clinic, to the south, Penrose Plaza offices, also some townhomes, you go across the street, you have some mixed commercial, and then also some multifamily residential up to the north, and then modular housing directly adjacent to the property. So that kind of gives you the overview, and then this is just again with without the zoning layer turned on, so you can see where that is. And then again, just some additional photos, just of southeast, west, north of the existing site. And then here is site plan, so again, it's oriented basically southwest corner of the lot, parking, with three is turned up. This access to the south, that's actually owned by the vet clinic, and there is a signed agreement that was included in the packet, indicating the agreement between those two landowners. So I'm gonna kind of go through a little more, so the approval criteria is going to be site and architectural plans consistent with general purpose and intent of the code, that the plan is consistent with dimensional design development, all other standards of the code, that it's consistent with any previous approved plat, PUD, or any other precedent land use approval, which we are on to this property, and that the site architectural plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other city adopted policies and plans. So this table, and I'm gonna kind of go through each of these a little more in detail, it's just showing on that middle column is what the code standard is, and then what is proposed, and then whether that requirement has been met, so staff found that for all these requirements, code was met, there aren't no variances needed to request it, planning variances for the submitted application, so again, I'll kind of go through each of these a little more detail, so general zoning requirements, it means all the requirements for setback, building height, and then again, this is the commercial zoning district, so there is no lot standard, so like, we've got a residential zoning district, and you might have a certain amount of square feet per unit, that doesn't exist for commercial zoning districts, so it's not applicable to this project, and actually, the same thing goes for lot coverage, now even though this is a vacant lot, and it is infill development, it does not meet the code definition of residential infill, residential infill is defined again by code to share two lots, the single family homes, and also be a residential zoning district, in this case, neither of those situations exist, so the lot coverage limitations, which you would see maybe residential zoning district, are not applicable here either. And then again, so design elements, as a multifamily building, they must have five of the following architectural features on each elevation, so north, south, east, and west, and here is the list. So with each elevation, and staff found that each elevation had the four sided design, and had at least five of these features. So again, you see, this is all black and white, but there's basically the difference in color, it's kind of a gray and stone color, and then also, that's all cement, so it's just paneling, which is an approved building material, so again, this is a north elevation, has at least five of the architectural elements. This is would be the south, so basically, like facing Penrose Plaza, again, has five of the elements. Again, we have the east elevation, so this would be on the back of the property facing the veterinarian clinic, so it still does meet the architectural, has five of the elements there. And then also this, so this is the west elevation, so this would be what you would see from Grand Avenue. And again, this doesn't include all the landscaping, that would be there as well, but this would be the main entrance to the building, you can see the entrance vestibule there, so again, meets all the requirements with the five features. And then another stipulation, so with a multifamily building, all units front along primary street, should to the maximum extent feasible, be oriented towards primary streets, so in this case, the primary street is Grand Avenue, and the primary entrance is facing Grand Avenue, the vestibule is there, staff found that the landscaping in general design was oriented against the maximum extent feasible to the primary street being grand. So again, there's that rendering, you can kind of see the different colors, which is also a requirement of multifamily, is to have different tone colors. That's meeting another requirement, and then as far as the landscaping, the open space requirement, the project was required to have five thousand eight hundred thirty seven square feet of open space, and that is based on, again, the zoning district for commercial zoning, the puzzle includes seven thousand two hundred fifty three square feet of landscaping, which can be used towards that open space requirement, so it meets the open space requirement. And then as far as the specific landscaping requirement, again, that's by the zoning district, commercial zoning district requires ten percent of the total site, and that ends up being two thousand nine hundred eighteen square feet, and the provided amount meets that. Then another aspect of the landscape plan is that being a vacant lot, there are a number of existing trees on the property, and any tree with a caliper of fourteen inches or greater must receive director approval for removal, and you'll see in the landscape plan, some of those trees have been requested for removal because of either site constraints the way the site was designed, or because they're in poor health, several of the other trees are gonna be protected in place during construction, and then evaluated following, and most of their are still in good, good health, they'll be retained, if not, they'll be removed, and then some of the other remaining trees will actually be incorporated in the landscape plan. And even without the existing trees on the property, the submitted landscape plan met the requirement for a tree plantings. Just a bonus. But then another aspect to landscaping is typically a planting strip is required for any development, and that would be the landscaped area between the road and sidewalk, now in this corridor, there are no planting strip on any other property in the entire corridor, you do see on the right, there is a small one, there's actually a city fire item right there, which is probably why that area has, looks like that, but for the rest of the corridor, there isn't one. And it's allowed, again, the director may waive that requirement based on existing conditions, provided that the landscape elements define the edge of the property, if you just go back to the proposed plan, there's a definite, definite edge to this is where the property starts. And also too, another aspect of this proposed design is that because it's a non-residential zoning district, code requires an eight foot sidewalk instead of a five foot sidewalk, so there will be an improvement to the pedestrian facilities in the area with that wider sidewalk, because I don't think on this side of Grand where the project is, there are other eight foot sidewalks. And then again, more specifically with landscaping to the parking lot, required parking lot landscaping is twenty percent of the parking area, the total parking area, eleven thousand seven hundred thirty five square feet, so out of that, there are required twenty three hundred approximately, and the landscape area, which would be all the area kind of along the perimeter, and the two areas in yellow, meet that requirement. And an additional requirement is that you have interior parking landscaping, which is the two yellow areas, and that's at ten, ten square feet per space, and there's thirty four parking spaces, which also meets requirements. So again, so for the parking lot landscaping, that also meets code. And then again, so back to parking, so for this project, twenty units, as a multifamily building, they would be required to provide thirty four spaces, which is, which is provided in the plan, and then as far as bicycle, bicycle parking, they'd be required three, they're providing six. So they need all parking requirements, and then as far as traffic, the proposed project does not generate sufficient enough traffic to require a C dot access permit, so that's not required, and then the traffic study indicates there will be an increase in generated traffic as shown in the table below, and so again, you'll see, you know, you have the peak, peak hours, there's an increase in traffic, but again, not sufficient enough to require a C dot access permit. And then again, back to access and circulation, how the development would be accessed, so the existing south access is already there, and that's actually, the access itself is owned by the vet clinic, so that's, that's gonna be on the south side of the property. And then the second access, which should be on the north side, is if you look on the photo on the right, you see kind of the, there's a gap, there's actually a fence there, and there's a gap, that's approximately where that north access onto Grand would be, so there'd be two accesses to the site. Now with that, so this south access is existing, it's been there ever since that clinic's been there, it's been there for some time. So actually, in order to use that access and utilize it in this proposed project, it would require several variances from the engineering department, which again, you know, variance from the engineering department is different than planning variance, and we're not looking at certain criteria, it's for engineering review, but it's, engineering department indicated several aspects of the design that would require engineering variances, and receiving approval for those variances is included in the conditions. So engineering department basically, pretty much any redevelopment of the site using the south access would require it. And again, it's, so it's for items such as, so the distance of that south access from the south property line, fifteen feet is required in the engineering standards, and where it is, where it's been compared to the property line is less than fifteen feet, so that's an engineering variance that was requested, and also the site distance, the site distance triangle from that south access, which again, it's, you know, if you're at, about to access Grand, now where your vision is, you know, and that's calculated, so typically, engineering department calculates that for two hundred and fifty foot distance, they will also accept it being calculated with a hundred and fifty foot distance, but again, that requires a variance request, and then also the driveway width, minimum in engineering standards is twenty four feet width, existing is twenty three point one feet, so again, that also will require an engine variance. Site access distance, again, on that south access, standard separation is thirty feet from existing access points, proposed distance is twenty four feet, which again, would also require that engine variance, and then also turn radius, because those two access points on the south side are fairly close together, the turn radius doesn't meet the minimum standard of engineering standards. So engineering department, again, so they need, they needed to have these variances requested. Engineering didn't find any reason to not grant these based on, on the design and items submitted. And again, it just, it is a condition of approval that going forward, these conditions need to be met. And they submitted the variance requests as well to the engineering department. And another, finally, so this, this project being more than ten residential units is subject to the community housing requirement, and so for the twenty unit development, twenty percent of the units need to be resident occupied, so that's a thing four, and ten percent need to be de-restricted to income, which ends up being ten. So these are all going to be rental units, and applicant proposes a total of four units with three one bedroom units, and then one of the two bedroom units is de-restricted, so I also forgot to point that out in the breakdown, seventeen of the units are going to be one bedroom, and then three of the units are going to be two bedrooms. So that's what you'll see in the development, and then also, two of those can overlap, so you can have, you know, over the four, all four could be resident occupied, restricted, and then two of those would be the income, so they need that requirement as well. And also too, so if the proposed project meets comprehensive plan, and so staff identified five of the goals of comprehensive plan that this proposed project meets, so one, direct development to locations and building forms that are cost effective to serve. So this is an existing site, it's a vacant site, so it's gonna utilize existing city resources to develop there. Two, provide housing opportunities for the entire community, so the proposed development will provide housing variety and affordability, especially as the development is subject to the community housing requirements. Three, support social diversity, I was like, I couldn't finish that one, but again, providing a variety of housing affordability and also in a mixed use area. And then four, addresses transportation and provides multiple convenient travel choices, so the proposed element is providing all the required parking spaces, and then also, it's, it's within walking distance of the twenty seventh street station, it's not close enough to be eligible for any of the reductions, but again, if you were a resident there, it would be realistic, you're within walking distance to get there, so it meets, meets that goal. And then five, preserve small town character, all maintain the livability going springs and increasing the vibrancy in commercials successfully downtown. So Marv is maintaining the livability, you know, it's direct development on a vacant lot, it's currently existing, it's there, it's a thing. An already developed area, so again, so that's where staff felt that this plan, that comprehensive plan goals. And then again, so reviewing agency comments, I kind of already went over what engineering comments were and the associated variances, public works, electric, water, wastewater, most comments submitted by these apartments were mostly technical details on utility locations. The proposed building is located over the existing sewer to the vet clinic, and that would be addressed in final plans review, which would occur prior to building permits in the middle, which is also, that issue is addressed in the draft agreement between the applicant and the vet clinic, and then also the fire department, fire department indicated that the building design, site layout didn't hit their ability to access the site and provide emergency services. So to date, no public comments were received, other than, so I did, we get a letter from the applicant, which is actually from the vet clinic, just indicating support for the project, received that today, email. But in short, supporting the project again. So again, so the action item is to consider the minor site and architectural plan with findings and conditions on pages eleven and twelve of the staff report, and staff recommends approval, so again, those are the criteria, and those are the listed actions. Questions for staff, or otherwise, I know that applicant also had a presentation too.
All right, thank you, Emery, very thorough, any questions to staff at this point, tell me permission. No. Christian Waller, please.
Seems like a great project, in my perspective, but so, are, are, are all the units for rent or ready for sale?
Correct, available.
And then on the project analysis, which I'll just kind of give you kudos, that's awesome, so thank you for that. So, so is the engineering, and maybe this is for the applicant too, but are, are all the engineering variances approved, is, did, did engineering approve those?
So not before this all went out to packet, and so that's why it had to be included, they were still working on receiving all the required items. So at this point, engineering received the variance request, they received all the items they needed, it just wasn't actually signed off on all this, was put out to packets.
And that's one of your conditions, so, I mean, they have to do that, but. Let's see, what other question do I have? The, the traffic study, and I saw you have an engineered traffic study, and all that's more advanced than my pay grade, but I guess my, my question is, it seems like the, the numbers seem really low, and maybe that's kind of for the applicant numbers of trips during peak hours for twenty units, and I don't know, it was, it was like thirteen and nine or something like that was what I saw, and I, I mean, I kind of looked through it, but maybe that's for the applicant to kind of talk about, but I'd just like to kind of hear about that, and just seems, just seems low to me, and but I'm assuming also that, that engineering goes through that and checks that all out, so that's our check and balance on that.
Correct, yeah, and applicant can probably comment more on the methodology, and you know, how their engineer put that together, but their traffic report was evaluated by our engineering department, they didn't find the issue with the numbers presented.
All right, thank you, any other questions?
I got one.
Good, Commissioner Sipperly, and I think the buttons work, right, the top buttons? No.
I think it's not that.
No, oh, yeah, they do. Commissioner Sipperly, please.
My question was about the building design requirements of having the entrances to all units be facing the primary street. Clearly, there's several units on the main level of this, and only the primary entry to the building is addressing South Grand Avenue.
And so that's a really good question, and so actually, when code, this code section is talking about multifamily residential buildings, all units would be, let's say this was a, have four buildings, each unit would be each building, so this is a one, this is one unit multifamily residential development, so that's, and there was some discussion about that as well with the applicant, or staff. Looked at code, and that's what that is referring to, so if there's, if this were four buildings, each building would need to be facing Grand, have a primary entrance to Grand.
We usually do call an individual apartment a unit, though, I wonder if we should clarify that at some point down the road.
Sure. Side note.
Side note. All right, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Commissioner Shaver, please.
Well, this is one of my pet peeves, with, not with anybody in this room, but this. Can anybody tell me what page fifteen of the site plan has, I can't get it to load on any.
Yeah. I'll bring it up.
You just stop sharing, and you share. It is, but are you sharing the screen, or are you sharing?
Yes, not moving any of these.
It says, it says I'm still speech chain.
Yeah, you're good, you're good.
Fifteen was the elevation sheet.
Correct, yes. There it is. I'll sort of bring up the ladder. Elevations. Okay, great, we've seen that tonight, thank you. Can you tell to me about the landscape and where the fencing occurs that was called on?
Yeah, so. So there is, there will be fencing on the north side of the property, a privacy fence, again, to separate the parking area and this development from the. and this development from the, all the modern housing to the north, so that will be there. Then also, so there you can see, so five-foot privacy fence on the north side property line. And there is some existing fence, and again, this is the vet clinic, so there is some existing fence here that will remain. And then it looks like there will not be fencing, but there was landscaping on this, this side here, but again, that's where the access grid is as well, so.
Okay, and nothing to the, nothing to the south then?
Correct, well, there is, there is landscaping.
But not fencing along that?
Not fencing.
Are there any issues with car lights exiting through this south access as it affects Penrose?
Actually. Yeah, there is a fence, if you go back to the site photo, Penrose Plaza on the north side has a small, has a fence here.
Existing wooden fence on there.
Correct, and that's on Penrose Plaza property.
Emery, do, does a property like this or a project like this need two access points?
Well, so it was considered, one issue here is if that self-access was removed. So let's say they might put a landscape barrier across that. Then they would actually need a fire truck turnaround because of the distance into the property. So. Yes and no, you know, it would not require it necessarily, but.
And the fire truck, you said there were issues with the, the turning radio going out of the south.
Yeah, so that would be on that south access, and that's just what the engineering standard is, is the turning radius fifteen feet.
So if there's a fire truck, they'd probably have to go out into the other lane and it would be controlled and.
But again, that part of that challenge is too, is just that's existing access that's been there for a place in time. So any, any type of provision uses would run into those same requirements from engineering standards.
Now, there, there are some trees that may exist in, in the future landscape areas. Right, some large cotters?
Yes.
And yet there are plantings defined in those areas.
Correct.
And in my experience, large cotters, nothing grows underneath them to speak of.
So, so again, that was where, and this is kind of showing where those all exist. So some of them have been requested for removal because of health. Some of them will be protected in place. If they make it to construction projects, they'd stay. But I think that would be something that could have further, further discussion on with the final plans. I mean, as far as what's submitted is, you know, whether it's evergreen or, you know, deciduous tree, it was, it's meeting the requirements for planting.
Yeah, I understand, but I wonder in the real world, if that's really, you know, practical or what, what's better, to have a large deciduous tree that, or at the landscape?
And that's something too, is, so this is the proposed plan for tree removal. If it was, you know, if it was determined that that would be a better choice, you know, again, it's, most of this just has to do with they're larger than fourteen, calipers larger than fourteen inches, so to take them out, they're going to need to be approved by the director, and so, you know.
So that would be a director's decision?
It's favorable to have a different tree species, that would be. Just as long as that, and they already met the minimum tree requirement even without these trees that are being preserved, so that could be.
Thanks.
Thank you, and Commissioner White?
Emery, so I did see that in the agreement between the adjacent parcel owner, that they're going to be relocating the sewer line. Can you just talk through what's going to happen on that a little bit? Sure.
That's exciting. So. Part of it is, is relocating it, but they're probably, see if you can see. It's probably pretty hard to see on this plan, but the existing sewer line that goes to the vet clinic runs underneath this building. And so they're going to bring it in from the north, if you see this as proposed sanitary sewer line. So they'll bring it in the north, basically in the parking lot, okay, hell, and then it'll go to the vet clinic. And then I believe that'll just be cut off and it'll remain there. But as far as, yeah, that's where the new one would be.
And so does the vet clinic actually have an easement over this property? Is that how that works?
That's a great question. Not sure, actually, what is, existing.
I'm, I don't believe there's a, there's a written easement for it.
Not this time.
Yeah. There's.
I think civil CDs are going to work on the legality of it. I saw you guys are cheering road maintenance fifty-fifty, but I was just curious. It's an easement over your property.
Yeah, I don't, I think it just existed.
I was looking for a survey and I didn't see one, no.
I mean, is that, is that something that's, that's needed? I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that the, that the sewer runs, so does, does the sewer for the new building? Because I saw clean out down there midway through the building going out to Grand, I'm assuming. So are there two separate sewer lines, one for the new building and one for the vet?
No, I believe they're sharing, but also to, one of the conditions is that the applicant and the vet clinic record a development agreement, which again would include items such as this sewer used to the south access, so that is one of the conditions.
To see like from a legal thing, you'd want to have some sort of utility easement. And if they have trouble and they have to dig it, you know, there's, I mean, they're getting a good deal, I think, by, I mean, it's a two-way thing that you get access, but they also get the sewer line. It just seems like you'd want to do that, I, I.
It looks on, it looks like on the GIS map, the, the vet clinic owns the access.
Correct, yeah, they, oh, this is so where it says.
So there's no easement then?
For the, the road, no.
No.
But where this, that sewer line is, that's the part, but again, since it's not going to be where it exists now, is not its future location, but the future location would again be part of that recorded development.
Which is north, not, not under their existing.
Correct.
So, so just to piggyback, the vet clinic is not getting a new road? No, okay, because that would be the easiest, if they repave it, then, yeah.
Bring it up to engineering.
We talked, we talked to the, the vet clinic about.
Let me, let me get to you in a little while, hang on just a second, let's finish the, the question and answer spiel here, and then we'll, we'll let you present your item, just a second. Anybody else?
I have another question. All right, my question is about the variance requests that are listed in the packet there, and I'm looking at, I mean, they're all, they'll say page nine and ten, but this is technically page five, I'm looking at number four. And it says, these are existing accesses for the veterinary clinic and the Penrose Plaza. So I'm a little confused now, is Penrose also using this veterinarian's driveway?
Are you referring to the engineering?
The engineering variance request, yeah.
Okay, that was submitted by the applicant?
I, you sent it to me, I don't know where it came from.
Okay, so I guess I'm just, which, which?
It's on page five of the PDF, because every second page is number, number ten.
Of the staff report?
Uh, no, in the variance, engineering variance component of the packet. It is under the variance for spacing requirements, access and circulation.
So that would, that just means like the distance between the two? Sorry, what was your question?
It says the existing act, these are existing accesses for the veterinary clinic and the Penrose Plaza. So that's just between the separation for the two driveways, basically.
Yeah, they're separate, driveway's not shared, and that just, yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure that Penrose wasn't also using this south access. Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? So, no, thank you, thank you, Emery. Would the applicant care to come forward, present your item? Please, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners, my name's Jennifer Carpenter, I'm a principal with LAI Design Group eighty in Bernice. Inglewood, Colorado eight zero zero one two. I'm actually. Emery did a great job. I know no one likes to stay at these late, I have more photos, he had more words. So, but just real quick on some of the questions that came up. So on the sewer, there is an existing sewer, we don't know the age and everything, or even we have not potholed it to find the depth. But the site is pretty flat, so we are putting in a larger, we're going four inch. And so it is going to come in the main drive off of Parade Avenue and kind of go diagonal. But it should just work better for everybody, so that'll be great. So our team, we have River City and Grand Junction, and they are our civil engineers and Apex Engineering and our traffic engineer. We are planners, landscape architects and architects from Inverness, which is just outside of Denver. And our client, we have representatives here today, Shannon and Kurt. Twenty-five, twelve, South Grand LLC. We've kind of run over some of the basic info of what we are looking for approval today. So here's just a little bit of a different snapshot, so our site is the yellow square with the river to the west. Grand Avenue, Twenty-seventh, State Highway eighty-two. Another great thing about this site is that we do have the Rio Grande Trail. And I know when we first started this project, we were working with Emery in regards to parking variances, and no one ever likes to do the variances, so we have parked the site. But this is quite close, we've actually walked it when we visited the site, and it's a great facility for the community. As part of the process, we not only posted the site as far as onsite and in the newspaper, but we also were required to send notices to adjacent neighbors, so there's a three-hundred-foot radius. So these are the individuals who receive notices from us about this project that were given the opportunity to make comment to myself or to Emery. A little bit different snapshot of some of the buildings and the uses. Here is our mobile manufactured housing, single-family to the north, the veterinary clinic. Across the street is another, I think it's a pet boarding or just animal boarding. Then here's Primrose, Penrose, that everyone's been speaking about, and actually, right behind there, they do have some townhomes. Emery did cover this, but I kind of wanted to just highlight a couple things. Open space is required at twenty percent, and we actually exceed that at twenty-seven. And then landscape in general is a ten percent requirement, and we have twenty-seven. Again, where we exceed the landscape for surface and interior on parking lot. One great thing is, you know, we could have maxed the site, asked for parking variances and pushed the height, we're actually under the height limit. We're over on bike parking. It says three spaces, we actually have six racks, so we actually have twelve spaces, so. And then if you look at the total of architectural elements, not only are we a four-sided building, we actually have up to eight elements can be found on every elevation. And then also there is a requirement for storage, we do have individual stor, storage units for each apartment unit. And then we are meeting the affordable, attainable housing requirement that you have. Here is just a graphic that you guys are familiar with, that we can go back to, but some things that have changed, we've actually been working really close with staff. And even Public Works came in last minute and asked for us to switch our transformer, so we've, you know, we've been getting comments, I think we've been quite receptive to getting these turned around. We do have a eight-foot sidewalk now for walkability, we have an access to the vet. We have some slides coming up that can show some of the things that we're doing for the vet clinic. But we do hit the standards and the coverages, as they're not a part of the requirement, we do, we are comparable to other you know, twenty-unit apartments in the area. Setbacks, parking, bike, there's even a requirement for enclosure of trash facilities. So here's some different snapshot views. So this is the driveway or property here of the vet clinic, so this is what's been under discussion, as well as here's the existing sidewalk. So you can see this is a duplicate image of what Emery showed, that existing fence, existing asphalt drive. And then this is just a site facing out to the west. So a couple of things we're going to do is we're going to have to get some of these dry utilities relocated, we've been in contact with them, their Comcast, Comcast and cable. There's also a mailbox here for the vet, we've been in touch with the postal service about relocating that. And then also they have an old sign that they've taken down and the post remained, and they have a new sign, or newer sign here that we're going to work with the vet clinic. Give them a new sign out of the site triangle and have that, it'll probably actually be on our properties, we don't have to do a right-of-way encroachment or anything. And that'll be by a separate permit at the time of construction documents. Grand Avenue, because we are multifamily and we have to kind of dress up our facade for Grand Avenue. Here's just a better snapshot at it, we have existing light poles and utilities that will be taken care of. And then this white box is about the location of where our building and parking lot will be located. And then here are two of the trees that are under discussion, that we're going to hope to protect in place and get the, get them reevaluated during and after the construction process. Our vet clinic to the east, one thing to note about this is actually their, their existing fence. They also have like this small patio, or actually on our property, so we're, instead of just removing them, we're actually going to give them a new fence. It's going to be our fence on our property, but it's going to be a split rail. So give them the same, you know, we're just going to upgrade this, if we can reuse it, great. We're also going to put in a decomposed granite walkway. So they can still, there's a gate back here that they take other animals in through the back that aren't, you know, maybe they're, they don't like crowds, so they don't go through the front door. You guys got a copy of our development agreement, so this just kind of highlights the seven main things that were agreed upon. And, you know, this was actually taking place before Shannon, with the LLC even bought the property. So we went to the neighbors initially off and got everyone's feedback. Here is a colored site plan with our landscape, showing that all the different categories of landscape that we exceed. Also, this is the proposed location for the vet's mailbox, because this vestibule is going to have our mailboxes in it. So it'll be unlocked so that the mail person can come in and put the mail in, so they're already parked out here, and then they can come over and deliver the mail. And then the vet sign would be on our property out of the site triangle at this corner. Here is the discussion, this is the slide that was showed earlier about the trees that when we went out there and measured them. There are four that, due to building setbacks and requirements and access for fire. Unfortunately, we have four trees that we're requesting removal of. We have two that are under the fourteen inches and also in not great health. And then there are about six that we're going to try, we would like to protect in place and reevaluate. There is an option that they almost fit exactly in a parking stall. So, but we would not meet parking requirements. The building orientation, here's a close-up of our vestibule. So this is where we would have access for our mail and our entry facing, and also another material use, this is, I bought, I brought a material board. Sometimes people like the real thing versus images. So we are doing a hardy-like material on the building, and then the vestibule would be a faux wood finish. We have updated, we have four rendered elevations, so you guys aren't looking at the black and white ones that are in the submittal set. So here's our. So here's our different use of materials. This one highlights the variation of materials, as well as we're at thirty-five feet when the maximum height is forty. This is our main elevation facing north and the parking lots. Facing Grand Avenue, our prominent vestibule entry feature, as well as, this is something that we've worked with staff in regards to, we have about a one-foot bump out on the architectural reveals, as well as metal awning details, dark windows, trim at the top. Another requirement or request of the architectural guidelines is to have covered balconies, covered porches. And again, in the back, we've embraced and covered the entire balcony and patio. So now on this side, we have about a six-foot projected facade. And then facing the east, which is the vet clinic, this is kind of where a unit would typically be. But we have tucked under our trash enclosure right on the outside, because it can't be under the building as our transformers. And then also we have a oversized area, oversized walkway with a ramp for easy movement. So hopefully that would keep everybody out of the front door traffic. So we have building, approved building materials. And we have, we did start off with a gray tone, gray and white building, and we have transitioned that and met staff comments. Here's our detailed floor plans. This is in your packet. It shows that we have seventeen one bedrooms and three two bedrooms. And for now, we have just, we've put one affordable housing on each floor, and then we've taken the two-bedroom on the first floor. We've met and exceeded, I feel, the review criteria for approval tonight. So this might also help with some of the questions in regards to the engineering variances. So this is an existing condition. So it is engineering that would require a fifteen-foot radius, curved radius, to come out of the driveway. So obviously, if we were to do that, it's shown down here, unfortunately, a little light, it would take us all the way into Penrose's driveway. And then by the time you put the ramp on it, we would be out in their drive. So we are seeking a variance to work through the construction details. But I believe what would happen is this would probably be a standard driveway apron with just improved ramp conditions with the fifteen-foot radius. Fire already can get through this intersection, because we have put their radiuses on this, and it's shown on our site plans. And then finally, after approval by the commissioner's view tonight, we will be finishing up our site plan for recording. We'll transition to civil construction documents, finalize our building permits, and then also we, our goal and our client's goal is to try to get net zero properties. So looking at solar panels, car chargers, composting, and we already will have recycling bins onsite. So if there is any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Questions to the applicant? Commissioner Shaver, please.
Or other than that, the Grand Avenue intersection of that South Road, are there any improvements to be done on that?
On the South Road?
On the South Road?
Yeah, so actually, right now, it doesn't drain. So we will be putting in a concrete pan, and then we're also patching the asphalt where there's divots and holes already. And then just because it's asphalt, we are going to be straightening out the north side of it with a curb and gutter from, let me just point it out. So there is a curb and gutter that come here with a pan. But this side is going to be a curb that just fades into the existing, because obviously they, they just have asphalt, they don't have curbs. But here is lightly gray. This is going to be a concrete pan that will help with drainage along that road. And then yet, there is an existing fence here with some bollards.
Very attractive, by the way.
Thanks, thank you.
Commissioner White, please.
I appreciate that you guys are taking those steps towards, I don't, I don't recall what you called it. It was like zero or
Net zero.
Net zero. Are you working with the city and making sure that the landscaping fits kind of ecologically friendly plans? So zero escape type?
So not directly right now. Our plant list hasn't been commented on, but we're definitely open to that, as well as there was a comment earlier about putting understory under the evergreen trees. So this kind of came up after we had done our second submittal. It was brought to our attention about getting the fourteen-inch caliper trees. So that's why the current plant kind of has an overlay. So if the evergreen trees come out, we'll have understory with a deciduous or a shade tree. And then if the evergreen trees stay, we are well over on our plant counts. We'll probably switch to a shade tolerant ground cover or a shade tolerant plant that will do better under an evergreen tree. And then we did have an irrigation plan too, so that'll be reviewed, and we can switch the types out as well, if recommended.
And then the other question I have, and this is maybe like kind of a combo question for, for staff as well. When we paper or go out and submit feedback from neighboring folks, is that ever in Spanish? Because I know that trailer park adjacent to this is a lot of Spanish speaking.
We did not do any individuals.
We don't have a requirement in the code related to that, and it's maybe something that we may want to consider in the future. So
Yeah, lucky questions as well. Thanks for being here and for your presentation. First thing I want to ask is why did you name it Farm on Grand Avenue, but it's not a farm and it's not on Grand Avenue?
So I think that's because we, my only answer, and I'll let Shannon speak to this, there's a couple of other buildings that are under construction in, on the Western Slope, and they're also the farm at. So it might just be a series?
Yes.
If you would like to, if you would like us to change it, like the approval box?
Occasionally, there's a horse next door, but a farm does not that make. About the site plan, I don't see any sidewalks around the parking area, and you refer to a plaza. The entry is oriented towards the, an interior plaza, but I don't actually see where your plaza is, and I don't see pedestrian circulation there on the site.
Yeah, so right now, our parking stalls, while there is no requirement for pedestrian connectivity and any matter, but our sidewalks just kind of link the parking lot from east to west, and then just crossing over. This area is quite large compared to what it used to be, and we have not just finished off the details of that, be it if it ends up being, you know, pavers, or, you know, if we end up adding a bench or a flag pole or anything like that, that's just not been done at this time of the planning stage.
Yeah, I did see the bench there on the, on the drawings. I'm a little concerned about, what about the site distances, but I know that engineering's going to deal with that. It seems like going from two fifty to one fifty, when people come cruising through that roundabout could really be a concern. I'm worried for the safety of people trying to exit this property via the south access. Another concern I have is where, where are you going to be storing snow? Like, one of the logical places would be right where you've indicated that the veterinarian's post box would be.
Yeah, so we just actually had a talk with Barry, who is the owner next door. We're actually going to share snow services. And so probably what will happen is this will get pushed over to his property.
Okay. Is that going to be in your development agreement with?
I believe in the final development agreement, which also deferder that we are going to have to have a shared access agreement, legality of it, so that will have. Yeah, so right now, there is nothing. It's just his property, and we've put on a piece of paper the intent, but at the final approval, it will have to be an access piece map.
Okay. Thank you for bringing the materials in person. I think the colors are nice. I noticed that the faux wood appearance keeps getting called faux wood, and it doesn't have any texture to it. I don't know if that's something that
So right now, we are pricing and looking at lead times for products, various lead times, various vendors. Unfortunately, everyone says the pandemic, but that's what it's come back to. I don't know how real wood would really handle as far as longevity, but hardy board, you can actually make it look like anything.
Yeah, it comes with it.
So that is actually, the only sample I could get was that sample that shows the look. So, but it is our intent to get something that is, you know, has longevity and, you know, damage proof, won't be damaged, so.
And that cementitious material sure is good for that. So you might, might consider one that has more of a visual texture.
Okay.
And in terms of the texture of the cementitious panels, on the, on the architectural drawings, I don't really see any delineation, but on the renderings, it looks nice with exposed fasteners and a repeating pattern. Has that been decided?
Yeah, so there will be reveals. And then the texture is not going to probably be something like what you would see in your house as a heavy knockdown, but there will be a texture to it.
So is it going to look like stucco, or is it going to look like a two-foot by six-foot panel like I'm seeing here?
Both.
Okay.
So there will be a slight texture, but it's going to have reveals in it.
And exposed fasteners, like, the earlier rendering showed keep low exposed fasteners.
On our canopies and on our, our canopies, our railings, you know, there's that opportunity to add the detail and, you know, the bolts and the pins and but as far as, I don't know where they're yet. I know these exposed, you know, balcony, and I'm sure Shannon or we even have Kurt here, they can speak, Kurt is one of our GCs, can speak to some of the ways we can do that, if that is a request.
Well, I'm sure the detailing is not yet complete. Was it your intent to make this building look very similar to the commercial property next door?
Initially, no.
Because it really, really resembles that building to the south, other than this, the entry element that has been applied on the north.
Yeah, being in a commercial district, we didn't want to kind of do Swedish pitched roof, ski chalet. We're in a commercial district, so we were trying to do a modern. So this is where we are at right now with our pricing and our vendors.
Well, I mean, there's, there's something to be said for being similar to the adjacent building, since the uses are different. I guess it, it doesn't really, it doesn't really look residential to me. And the, the entry element that is to the north, are we concerned that that's going to get a lot of ice buildup around there? Are you planning heated sidewalks or?
We have talked about heated sidewalks. We've also talked about, you know, putting the heat transfers at the top of the doors, and then just making sure there's availability of ice melt shovels inside the vestibule.
Oh, the fence, I, are
Oh, yes, let me, sorry.
The fence on the north property lot, I thought we were not allowed to have fences extend past the face of the building. Is that only residential zone district?
There's an existing fence there that weaves the property.
Yeah.
So our intent is to work with, if that's an HOA or management company, just pretty much to clean that up, because the other thing that's going to go into that area is we were asked to leave as much as we could, because Glenwood Springs is planning on under, taking those electrical wires under.
Oh.
So I'm not sure, I don't want to speak for them, but the wires that are above ground right now will eventually, the dry utility will eventually get buried here. So we want to, we want to work with the neighbors also and give them a nice new fence, because some places it's missing and and then also you guys had asked about the fence earlier. There is a fence in one of my snapshots that I showed for the back of the vet. And then he has his fence here that we're going to replace. So there will be a split rail here.
When the utilities get undergrounded, the city's going to probably have an easement for its electrical there. We're, it's okay to put parking in an easement like that, right? Parking and planting.
They said that was fine, as long as we didn't put trees. So we have a shallower root system. And they were willing, because it was kind of an afterthought, hey, how much will you give us? And because of some code and standard setbacks, that's what we ended with.
Yeah, and you, when designing this, you wouldn't have known that the plant was to underground. One last question on connectivity is, will there be any pedestrian access between this parking area through Penrose Plaza as a shortcut to the bus station?
No, I think the only, the only access was, would be if somebody walked through the vet. I think there is an EVA on the townhomes on one of their drive aisles. So if you would come around the vet and come through the center of his, I think he has an EVA back here. But no, they, they have a solid fence, and it's off our property, so.
It would be up to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I just know that sometimes people do tend to shortcut when they're running late.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, and Commissioner Waller.
The only question I'm going to ask of you that we talked about earlier is, is the, is easement for the sewer line? And I'm just kind of, you know, and I know it's not in there, and it's, and I'm assuming that the electric, when she talked about the electric, that that's a city thing, and that comes with utilities, and that's what it is, but I'm assuming that the sewer line maybe goes from a manhole or some sort of connection out in the road back to there. And, and I'm only thinking that if, in the future, if the vet, you know, needs to, needs to get in there and clean it out ten, twenty years, who knows who the owner is and all that, it could be.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't have the utility plan in my presentation, but the utility, the sewer is coming in right here. I believe there is a manhole or an inlet. Or a cleanout.
Cleanouts.
And then it comes down. So when we get into the civil CD, which is the next step, they will probably give us the recommended easement for new proposed utilities. Typically, I think it's maybe
I mean, I'm just assuming that it's, that they own that sewer line coming through your property.
I think there's just going to be an agreement where their sewer line is going to stop at our property, and we're going to pick it up and bring it to the street, the South Grand Avenue.
So everything on your property will be yours.
And everything
There's a problem with there and.
Yeah, kind of like if there was just a utility going down the street, and we've all tapped into it, depending on where it.
Right. Okay.
Cool, looks like that was it. Any other questions? No? All right, well, thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody here from the public that would like to comment in this application? Please come forward. And we're also, nobody here in the room, so we'll check, we'll check on Zoom. Anybody there that doesn't look like Zoom at all? Alyssa, I'm counting on you. If anybody's raising their hand, please let me know.
No, when she says.
No, when she says, excellent. Nobody wants to say anything. So I'll close the public portion for the hearing. I'll bring it back to the commission. For a motion and planning file, ten twenty-one, mine is site and architectural plan, twenty-five twelve South Grand Avenue. Staff, there's one action item, and staff recommends approval.
I'll make a motion to approve planning file number ten twenty-one for the mine site, architectural plan twenty-five twelve South Grand Avenue. Given the findings and conditions on pages eleven and twelve of the staff report.
Excellent. We have a motion to approve. I'll say, and a second, any discussion on this item?
One brief thing to correct on the staff report, it says, it should say, we're fourteen. Permission to remove any trees over fourteen, not all trees over fourteen inches.
Okay, fair enough. Any or all, or none? Anybody else? Oh, let's see. Sorry, Commissioner Shaver, please.
I think that we should add a condition that there is a storage, snow storage agreement with the adjacent property owner at the vet clinic. Add another condition that would state that there would be that sewer agreement with the adjacent. Add another condition that would state that there would be that sewer agreement with the adjacent. That clinic property as well.
The sewer easement?
Yes. Just to assure that all happens.
Good, thank you. George, how does the guy feel that made the motion?
I'm good with amending the motion on both of those.
And adding the conditions.
And adding, yeah.
Okay. Jen, please.
My question is if they can't achieve a snow storage agreement, that they would be able to potentially address this snow storage in another manner, like they could remove it, the snow.
Yeah, sure.
Just anything.
But taking parking spaces is not enough.
Actually, I think that there is a provision that allows for a certain number of stalls to be spin storage and even in the reminded.
Up to ten percent?
Up to ten percent.
Up to ten percent. So making that, that kind of makes it, that doesn't, that condition.
You could maybe say that the applicant or the staff to address no storage in this application.
So he amended this.
Are you?
I'm debatable today.
So that was the motion and then the second.
Oh, yes.
Who was the second?
Like you were the second.
Oh, I was? Yeah. Oh, well, I guess I'll go with that. All right. Motion amended second with the added few conditions.
Do we have random other concerns about the parking, I mean, the traffic study? I think, I think twenty units and having nine cars going out in the morning doesn't seem realistic. I, you know, I trust the traffic engineer.
What traffic study have you seen?
Every time they, I don't know why, it's only about ten percent of what I was guessing it would be. I mean, if you've got twenty units, there's probably forty people and at least half of those probably leave for work in the morning, so.
But how does that affect the end result?
Well, it just might affect the service of the roundabout, South Grand Ave and all the ingress and egress that might occur with a very limited shortest site distance.
Well, you know, one, one, one thing I think, you know, so I, I asked that question.
Yeah.
Too, is, is the response I got was that engineering goes through and.
Our experts.
Yeah, I mean, you know, because I agree with you.
Yeah.
But, but, but I mean, I mean, that staff going through that, of engineering staff.
Right, the, the traffic analysis did count a restaurant across the street and of course, that was removed last week. We know it's gonna probably be multifamily, but I would think they would be about similar in counts. I, I just, I don't trust the number, but I do trust engineering to review it.
And that's what I heard.
Yeah.
So I guess no concern really, since you asked about concerns with the traffic.
Right, I would like engineering to take a close look at that.
Okay.
Fair enough. Any other discussion on this side?
I just would like to say, I, I mean, I think it's a beautiful proposal and I think it, you know, meets all the requirements. I think for me personally, it's just, you know, there was the item in the comp plan about providing a variety of housing. I just keep seeing all of these for rent units and that, that for me is hard to see. I just feel like it's not providing a variety of housing for our community. And though this meets all the requirements, I still feel like I would love to see more for sale units. And I know that this doesn't affect your application, it's just discussion around this. I don't feel like we are providing a variety of housing through consistent approval of these types of projects.
Any more discussion? No, I don't have much. I just wanna say thank you. This is a fantastic infill project. That's what we're looking for, is to infill and not necessarily turn over new dirt, but dirt that's been turned over. This is a fantastic lot for this kind of proposal. So, and of course, it's modern, so I'm all over. None of these Swedish peaks and stuff.
Farmhouses.
Not even Swiss, not even Swiss peaks, none of that. This is great, so. With that, if there's nothing else, I'll call for the question. The motion stands to approve with added conditions.
I wanted to clarify that the amended motion, it still contains sewer easement language.
As far as I know, it does, if I understood this right.
I, I, and I thought how it was said was that either an easement or an agreement. I mean, because you talked, you talked about getting an agreement, you know, with the vet.
And I, I will, I just looked at the agreement that was in the packet, does discuss exchange of sewer easements. So I, I, I think that addresses it. Doesn't hurt to add a condition.
I'm okay with that. Right, are you?
Yeah. So again, we'll move forward as it stands, I guess.
You are, you okay with that?
Okay, thank you. Anyway, back to the call for the question. I'm gonna do it by voice vote. The motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, we see none. Excellent. Let the motion carries. Okay, well, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Yep.
Good luck with your project. With the farm, good luck with the farm. Fantastic.
You know, what is what it is, you know?
I thought it was our school. Wasn't our school there? I know, but it was there. And then it burned down. I think it was our school. No, it was our school.
That's what it was.
It was, anyway.
A horse does not affirm make.
Nope. A lot of kids could. Okay, anyway, item seven, Commissioner, Commissioner, no, let's, let's do that at the end. Directors, directors comments first.
So you may have seen in the newspapers that there is a moratorium that is being considered. So City Council did vote seven zero to enact a moratorium on new housing developments over ten. It does require ordinance and it is being considered by City Council at the meeting on this week. So it is something that would require both first and second reading. At this time, we, I think as it's written in the packet, it would go into effect on first reading. So that's something that City Council will consider. There are a couple of different options in the way that the moratorium is envisioned. There's some breakpoints in the code. I do know that I'm planning applications for new housing units that are nine through twenty-four through the planning commission. And so I think when the motion was made at the previous meeting by Council of Wusso, that it was ten and above. So we have, we thought that, I think, there was just a misunderstanding of where the break is in that code. And so there are a couple of options, but one of the options that's before City Council is that that would go into effect for anything that's nine and above. And we will have our first comprehensive plan steering committee meeting in December, so December thirteenth. And we do anticipate that it could be that the comprehensive plans consultants would have a little addition to their contracts that would relate to some of the items that City Council was asked for during the moratorium. And so that would be part of the, the whole comprehensive plan if City Council decides to move that direction. But there may be a little bit of conversation that's very directed toward housing and, and growth. That would be in addition to the regular comprehensive plan scope. And with that, I'm open to any other questions that you guys may have.
Okay, fantastic. Now, the, the regular meeting is on the fourteenth, right? And we shuffle some things around to fit it all in.
Ever changing jigsaw puzzle? Hi.
Thank you for taking my call on that, Marco. So we do have some pieces that are moving around. We've had some applicants that were originally scheduled for December, asked to be moved to January. So I think we're going to be able to accommodate everything that we want.
The one we pulled up especially?
The one that is being called up by Planning and zoning commission will be per our code, at least on the agenda for December. Yes.
So, so is your meeting on the thirteenth or are you combining it now?
There is a meeting on the thirteenth for, for comp plan purposes only, not land use planning items.
Do you have back to back?
Both meeting are here?
Both meetings have dinner?
Me, both meetings, both meetings have dinner.
Apparently, we almost scheduled a Wednesday meeting, so you almost got it. I believe the thirteenth is at Marvitch Commons.
We may need to confirm, but we do need to get Marvitch Commons. And that's what, I know that we keep saying that all the work will be done on the room, but you know, the supply chain. So I think that we tried to move the meeting away from here and just to stay out of, out of the way of some of the work that needs to happen.
Makes sense.
And we're hoping to be here the following day.
So how will that moratorium affect our meetings and our workload as a commission, do you think? I mean, do you think we'll see far less applications? What do you think?
We still have some items that have come in, as kind of mentioned, there are a few kind of things that are in the queue that will be considered next couple of months. It's not a moratorium on commercial. So there still are commercial applications that are, or the conversation, so we've had developers who have had pre-apple some other kind of conversation with us, so we are anticipating that those will come through. But it'll give you the opportunity to focus on the comprehensive plan.
Council did that on purpose.
You know, one, one, one question I would ask would be, I mean, I can't make the thirteenth, but, but if, if Trent or, or whomever could put out like a schedule for, for the meetings, you know, I mean, maybe we come up with a standing schedule for the comp meeting, so we can build it in, so we don't schedule something and then go, well, jeez, we can't be there, because I mean, it's really important.
And, and I do think the intention under normal, non-holiday months is to have it when we would be looking at work session times, but definitely something.
So we should just make sure those are blocked.
Well, and let me pass it by Trent, just so that he's aware and we can try and work that out.
That would be good.
Consultants, so that you guys have more of a heads up time on that.
I think that is the plan, but we will confirm and make sure. And we just ended up with too many items on the agenda and couldn't fit it all.
Hannah, I don't know if you're adding those tables with requirements, code requirements, and whether the applicant meets those, but I love those tables.
I love spreadsheets.
I'm a planner. I love spreadsheets.
I was actually just gifted a mug that said, oh, there's a spreadsheet for that, so yes.
Well, they're very helpful.
It's becoming protocol.
Yeah, I think it's nice to just see what the code requirements are and, yeah.
It's a great application. The whole thing was just fantastic.
Good job, Emery.
Did they rush to submit that because of this moratorium?
They came in, they actually seriously had a pre-application meeting in March.
Long time ago, yeah.
And would any of the applicants be grandfathered in based off of, like, people who have already filed applications, obviously would not be subject to that moratorium, or how is that, how would that work?
So there's a couple of options before City Council. And one of the breakpoints in the code is that we have this approval that comes, for example, to planning commission, or comes to planning commission, City Council for approval. There is another step called final plans. We should, used to call them construction plans. It's essentially a hundred percent of the civil drawings. And that is a planning application. So one of the breakpoints that we're asking City Council is, did you mean that some of these applications where they have had an approval and, but they have not submitted their final plans? Would they be allowed to submit their final plans or not? That's a question on before City Council. Is that the exact question you asked, but?
No, 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 that gives me, yeah, that, that answers it.
Well, they'd be bummed if they got all the way through it, finally paid the engineer, and they're like, here's the last bit.
Just kidding.
That's fine. Okay, anything else from you guys now?
I love the idea of notices in Spanish.
Yeah, I mean, that one just particularly hit because of all those, those mobile homes are all.
I think that's a, I think that's a great suggestion. We'll definitely look into that. Thanks for mentioning it.
Although, one thing I was gonna bring up with that is when they're required to send public notice, they're required to send a letter to the owner. So it's one person.
Could be dual.
Yeah, but I just, something to this.
This is a translation to amazing things.
The tenants don't get a say.
That's correct.
That's crazy.
It's always been.
Yeah, that's.
That's like our HOA just got one, one for the whole thing.
That's crazy. I mean, I, I get that's.
And if your HOA gets a notice, it's because it touched HOA owned property. But if any of the owned property within your development also touched it within the buffer, that owner would get a notice as well. But yes, you're absolutely correct. It goes to the owner of the property per, per code requirement.
How, how is that trailer park? Is that, is that one HOA or, I mean, do people own individual trailers or is it? One person owns the whole thing?
The park owner would probably.
I believe it's a land lease sort of situation, so the notice would go to the park owner.
Very easy, so we could have the signs in good language.
Yeah, the public notice signs.
The ones that we post.
Yeah, yes.
And that would be like if they're walking past there, you know. I, I mean, we're, we're in that.
Call the number, yeah.
Yeah, at least call your landlord and Frank, I was wondering, if he was here.
I don't, I don't remember seeing a sign. I kind of drove by there.
Yeah, I didn't see any.
I know Carl would yell at me for doing that, but.
I was looking at rivers.
It was during your.
I didn't, I didn't see the sign.
It was gonna be adorable.
I think Carolyn told, she didn't see the sign. That's what it was.
That's what it was.
It was in my normal customer route and I didn't see it either.
It's under the tree, but maybe it's.
I know that they have to do a picture of it and all, that's.
We got a photo.
There's a photo of it.
Yeah, I like that.
All right, moving on. Commission of comment, commission of what?
Oh, well, I just, you already heard what I had to say, and maybe that wasn't an appropriate time to say it. Was that not appropriate to say to them about the comment about?
The, the housing choices.
Yeah, variety of housing. Is it more appropriate to say it now?
No, it's a great.
I think, I, I think you're fine.
Okay.
Legal wants to say something different, that's fine. We do have some, we do have some, I don't even know if this.
We can hear you.
We do have some standards for housing variety in our code that, that are held for certain size of lots. That's the only requirement that we have now. But as this topic has been brought up and discussed, it's something that we could definitely take a look at and how that operates within, within code.
It just seems like we are not meeting, you know, there's so many people that wanna realize the American dream and it's not happening. And that's not just because I'm a realtor. I swear to God. So like, it changes people's lives and we're just putting in all these wrinkles. Hard for me to see. Though it is to doing its meaning on.
I, I think it's important that you say that to the developers. Like, if we just say it here in the closed room, we already know this, but you need them.
Yeah, because maybe they'll come and develop some for sale units.
You were on target. Commissioner Waller?
The only thing I had was on, I think Trent, was it Trent sent something out on ten, ten grand? And that we need to give feedback on, which, I mean, I'm fine.
So it's a, that's our normal call-up procedure. When we get certain residential developments over a certain unit type, you guys get notified that we have received an application. And then per our code, you have the ability, if you believe that you should make the decision on that and not staff. So it's that unit count between one and eight. We send it to you if it's over three units. So then if three of you ask to call up that particular planning application, then it is moved to your next P and C meeting that is allowable and also still meets public noticing requirements.
I was gonna staff.
And that will, that was called up and so it will be on your documents. We'll be able to, coming to you soon.
Units on a tiny level.
I thought it was five, I thought it's five years.
Add five to three.
But we won't discuss it right now because. But we won't discuss it right now, because it's coming to you.
We'll discuss.
So revisiting, just when you need to recuse yourself, I, if I know somebody who's developing a property. And he is an acquaintance of mine, but I have no vested interest in it, is it still okay to here and?
We can, we can talk more um about that. We like to be pretty.
Well, I'm not gonna be here, so it's just.
You can always send those to us.
Yeah.
And it's to Mel and we award, it's illegal.
Okay, and then they all assess whether I should recuse myself.
And we can set up a meeting with with the commissioner, yeah, if we need to.
Okay, perfect.
All good?
More billable hours. That's good.
You good?
Sorry, I wasn't talking. Marco wants to go.
Keep going.
Who doesn't know if we got here by eight years by?
I don't, he does.
I'm done, I promise.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Shae. Well, I guess I prepare what has been said with the. Unit types. And, you know. Not only rentals, but they're really very similar in size and scope.
Yes.
You know, how many have we seen? Seems like every project we see.
One in two minutes.
You know, and I made a comment to one of the, you know, you're all either using the same, same analysis or the same company to provide you information. Because you're coming up with the same answer, and I, and I guess time will tell if that's right. Or if we overbuild. One bedroom unit. Colorado Springs and overbuild. You know, certain things that aren't gonna be occupied, or they're gonna have to. Kind of minimize down the road or whatever, you know, whatever the solution is, but. I agree, we're seeing all the same things, and as Carolyn said, like, every, you know, and I, I. I believe in science for sure, but every traffic analysis I ever see is more voodoo. It's like, it's like they're making stuff up.
Yeah.
And I know they do analyses of other projects, but it just, it just seems grossly contrary to common sense. You know, in many cases. That's my audience, thank you very much.
Thank you, George. And you know, I I have a question on that, on on what George brought up on on the, when when we're doing the comp plan. I mean, is that, can we talk about, um, I mean, I know we'll talk about diversity of housing, but but. You know, could we legislate or regulate or whatever the word is? I think you you have brought this up maybe in one of our work sessions to say that there needs to be some for sale units in in a. You know, in a development over X size, you know, maybe it's over. Twenty, thirty, I don't, you know, some number that that then you have to have that. I'm just asking that question, because I think, I think you brought that up during one of our meetings, and I mean, I think it's a good thing to bring up. But I mean, is that something that's open that you can talk about to do?
We certainly can. I think, you know, what um in hearing you say is that you would like to see. For sale be one of these unit types, which is not.
Right.
It is more town home.
Right.
Live, work. You know, single family like structure, but it doesn't, it does not dictate. For sale or for rent, and that is something that we can potentially deal with in the unit types as definition.
I mean, it would it would be like a project like this, let's say it was ten, and it's probably too small of a number. But, you know, maybe they have to have three for sale condos or something like that, you know, I mean, I don't know, I'm just.
I can, I can tell you where it gets complicated is in plating the condos with rental units. They're in in single block.
Oh, right, because you're messing with the whole building as a whole.
What you have to do.
And honestly, it's difficult. I mean, this is just a side, financing, those are difficult.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, maybe.
What if you kind of minimize it and sell it, and then this, the buyer rents? I mean, how do you?
An apartment as an investment.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's what they do. I mean, you know, I I mean, it seems like it's something to be talked about. I mean, maybe like something that's, that's happening at the meadows, and there's multiple buildings. And 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 maybe that's where we have a break or something that we, I mean, I don't know.
I think that we will share that back with um pushing to all as they, you know, prep for these kinds of conversations that they'll be having. I do think that, you know, it's difficult for you to say, we want it to look exactly like this. I think it's better to say like, hey, this is something you want to solve for, and then we will work on it.
Right.
Something that is legally defensible and that can.
And it's replicatable, because obviously they're, like, this is not a new concern. I mean, they probably have brought up this in other.
Well, didn't, didn't they do it um up there at the, at the mall, at the Demos property? I thought that they put some for sale units in when they came back, and that was, that was one of our feedbacks that came out of. The P and C.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's for sale units. I I have a feeling this moratorium will trigger all kinds of discussions, and somehow I think this is gonna be one.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good one.
Um, I think the inclusionary housing will will change, and I think this will be part of the discussion. Anyway.
Yeah, uh, this application that just came before us, I was kind of surprised how really commercial it looked. And I don't mind flat roofs at all, and I love savanticious panel. But I wonder, I mean, I think that happened because it's in a commercial zone district. So is there something maybe we should work into the the comp plan or the code, so that if it is residential, it has. I don't know, some other components, like I asked about the plaza, it's like a ten by two piece of concrete outside the door. I'm like, is this a, you know, a recreational amenity for the residents here? It's, yeah, I know, I was like, oh, I saw the drawing of the bench.
You complete your phone there.
I don't think you even, yeah, it's gonna be icy. She said, oh, we're gonna put out snow melt.
We do have residential standards that are different from the non-residential standards and the um our analysis shows that this project met those residential standards.
Okay, so outside, like, open space and, you know, recreation areas, they they did make the re- the residential component of that.
If staff finds that any of our non-residential or residential code standards are not met, you will definitely know about it.
So I guess that, I mean, there was a little strip of lawn along South Grand Ave, so I guess that could be part of it too.
Yes, we.
It's always curious to me that the parking spaces are factored into open space.
Yeah.
Parking spaces are not factored into open space, but certain aspects of landscaping. We actually are developing a Venn diagram for this section of code that is quite complicated. This is coming from our new planner, Watkins. He's working on that. Because there there's pieces that count towards open space and don't count towards open space, such as interior parking lot landscaping. That doesn't count towards your open space requirement. I I would encourage, when you guys all have lots of free time, like we all do. Um, you can find these specific sections of code and peruse them, but open space is pretty clear on what applies, what doesn't. Uh, that goes into that percentage, so we do evaluate that at the staff level to make sure that they've got the appropriate square footage for. Open space landscaping, and then also interior parking lot landscaping for the perfect little Venn diagram.
So we got rid of the, every eight or ten spots you've got to put an island, so I saw that there was twelve in a row, but it had islands.
So in that, it became a square footage um equation there, so it's per parking space. You have to have so much interior parking lot landscaping. Then you also have to meet your general site landscaping requirements, and then open space on top of that. So they all kind of intersect in weird ways, not saying it's easy to understand. So the Venn diagram is coming your way in addition to the spreadsheets and.
So, so we give a ten percent reduction of parking spaces, snow, for snow storage.
It's up to ten percent, yeah.
Because you don't need parking when it snows.
No, not.
In the winter time.
Exactly, we all get on our hovercrafts, right? Did you not get yours?
Don't go to work when it snows.
I'll bring that up with management. It it's just part of our code that snow storage, only ten percent, so it's a small amount. But you guys have noticed this before on some applications, where you're thinking the parking is a little tight, and then come winter, it gets a little tighter. That that is what we're abiding by in code. Staff doesn't have a lot of discretion there to dictate something else at this time.
Unless we change.
Unless you change it.
It's a discussion.
I'd like to see a few changes in the landscaping too, because I don't feel like rocks are landscaping or, you know, bark, mulch. The things that aren't living, I know we can count them as landscaping right now. I think we might like to revisit that as we. And and the asphalt parking areas, why require asphalt? Be combeable. But that's not even a comp plan, that's code amendments, right?
Yeah, those are more specific requirements, land use development standards that you are talking about, which.
And potentially engineering standards, which we don't regulate.
Yeah, what is the mechanism for changing those things?
We have work sessions, and you guys tell us what to do.
Well, I would say that engineering standards are not, are not basically careful.
Yeah, yeah, those ones are a little, little trickier.
But, you know, we had our, a work session about uh water conservation, and that asphalt ties right into that. That's all I got.
Alright, excellent. I got nothing. Just thank you very much for your time tonight, as always, and thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.